Okay, good morning. I'm called to order the September 3rd, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners and our first order of business will be our Pledge of Allegiance and after that I'm going to ask our Sheriff Bill Wilkie to come forward. Bill is the Chairman for the North Carolina Association of Sheriffs, is the Chaplain, rather, for the North Carolina Association of Sheriffs and he will give our invocation after we do our pledge. So if everyone please stand for the pledge.
During the war between the states, President Abraham Lincoln was approached by a pastor well-known to him. And this pastor looked at the President and he said, "Let us pray that God is on our side." And Abraham Lincoln looked at him and said, "Let us pray that we are on God's side." It's a very important aspect of leadership to know and to understand for believers what God's will is for your life and the things that He has asked you to do. The question is, do we ask in prayer for things for us or do we ask Him to know what it is we should do on behalf of things that are greater than us? And that's what I would submit to you for your consideration as I offer this prayer this morning. I would invite you to join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the instruction of leaders who have gone before us in difficult times and shown us the priorities and the ways that we should pursue always doing the right thing, not for us, not for our will, but for Thy will. As these pursuits commence, Lord, I pray that You keep Your hand upon each and every elected official resident citizen in this room. Pray that You would guide our words, our hearts, and our minds towards doing that which most benefits those around us in pursuit of Your desire to do what You would have us to do in this world. It is in the Son, His name, Jesus Christ, that I offer these prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Sheriff. Okay, our next order of business are public hearings, but we do not have one this morning and after that will be our public comment session. I do have four people that have signed up to speak. If you would limit your comments to three minutes, when your three minutes is over, Amy will let you know and if you would just, I'm not going to cut you off hard, but if you would just finish up your thoughts and your comments and so, and when you do speak, make sure you're speaking to the mic there and just kind of pull it down for you. So the first person I've got signed up to speak is Jean Sutton. Okay, you can come on up to the... Welcome.
Thank you. In all of my years, I have never been to a Commissioner's meeting, so this is a first. I live in Crabtree. I'm here to talk about the traffic situation from a development called Mount Soma, which is in Buncombe County. And they access their development through my development, which is Quail Cove. At first, it wasn't too bad, but we have a tremendous amount of traffic up and down Bald Creek as well as Quail Cove. Yesterday, probably there were 200 vehicles coming to this particular area over there. We would like some help in trying to find out how that we can mitigate that if Buncombe County possibly could take a hand in it and work with us to try to direct at least some of the traffic another way. Yesterday, about, there were about 200 cars across my house. So that's where we're at, is to try to get some of this traffic directed somewhere else. Not only that, but we have a great deal of trash and whatnot that's being thrown out. If any of us should need to get out, if we should have medical emergencies or should something like that happen, then there have been times when we could not get away from our homes to be able to get down to the paved road to get out to, or if emergency vehicles or sheriff or anybody like that could not get in to us either. And it's becoming worse every year. And we would like some help. We'd like to open discussion. If this county could open some discussion with Buncombe County or could do something by itself, we certainly would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next person signed up to speak is Brandon James. Welcome Brandon.
Good morning Commissioners. First of all, I want to just say it's pretty nice to come into the courtroom and see the Ten Commandments and the Pledge of Allegiance still said. That's an honor in this day and time for sure. But also, I am here to talk about Mount Soma. You know, as Jean just mentioned, it's got terrible here in the last little bit. Yesterday, Tommy, you know where my shop is. I sat there with the truck and trailer trying to turn in my shop. Fifteen cars bumper to bumper didn't even, couldn't get turned in. The five minutes after that, they pulled over having a picnic and, you know, right in the middle of our road in our driveway along with other issues, trespassing more or less. I tried to get along with everybody in the community, but we've had problems from throwing trash out to having picnics on people's picnic tables to jumping on their personal trampolines in their own yard. And it's becoming to be a pretty bad nuisance and I'm not sure what the solution is, but sort of like Jean talked about, I don't know if we could come together with Buncombe County. It's just beginning to be a major problem up and down Upper Crabtree Road to Bald Creek. One neighbor stole a bushel of apples lying in his tree in his front yard of picking apples off of his tree. You know, he had to go out there and, he's 95-year-old, he had to go out there and try to run them off. A 95-year-old man trying to run a bunch of them off that they didn't even understand what he was saying other than to get out, you know. Picking sweet corn, field corn. They stopping our silage fields on the side of the road and just blocking traffic, go down there and go to fill in their trunk full of corn, you know. But it's just been a major, major nuisance. One incident, one car pulled over and changed the baby's diaper and throwed it in the creek. And luckily, the homeowner seen it. They went out there and got it and followed them back up there and gave it to them, you know, off of their own property. But I know we've talked to, some people's talked to every one of the Commissioners a little bit on their own, you know, and mentioned it, but I think this is the first time it's been addressed, you know, as the Board itself. But also like Jean said, emergency-wise, you know, these buses going up there, two buses Saturday tour buses, 100-plus passenger buses, you know, I'm assuming. Emergency services, I mean, I'm sure they're well-equipped to handle that. But on a local level, I know as far as Crabtree, right now under their leadership, it'd be under, if they could handle a bicycle wreck, much less a 100-passenger bus if they wrecked and run off the mountain up there as steep as that place is. But we would consider it'd be nice if we could get a meeting together and see if we could come up with some kind of solution, you know, to help us locals out somewhere down in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Brandon. Okay, our next person signed up to speak is Rodney Smith, I believe. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, our community's pretty small. The impacts from the truck stop basically off of Exit 24 all the way into Buncombe County. Terry Ramey, he came out and seen it last year for himself on Labor Day. And it's not just a holiday weekend, it's about every weekend. My mom took an hour of her time Saturday, counted 170 cars in one hour. Yesterday, she counted 65 in 10 minutes. They pull over, I mean, like they'll pull two tenths of a mile to our house, get out and tell you that they're going to move in a minute. That don't work at my house, not when I'm paying the taxes. The environmental part on Buncombe County is there's videos I've sent Terry, I think every one of them about the sewage running out. There's a guy in Randall Glen. The septic system is probably not rated for the people that's coming. I think Leslie's got a better number than anybody. You're talking, what, close to 97,000 cars a year?
Yeah.
On a two-lane road? There's no way it can keep going like this. I mean, Saturday, yeah, Saturday alone, I had three different bunches in Hayfield, picnic spread out like they owned the place. Had another one going to fly a drone from my barn and that didn't fly. Same thing with Brandon. They've thrown that trash, bags of puke, used bathrooms in the cornfields. They wiped their hind end and throw it in the hayfield. It's uncalled for. It's totally uncalled for for a community and a tax-paying citizen to have to put up this. Buncombe County wants to say it ain't their problem about enforcing code. They should have somebody up there enforcing code. It's both counties' problems. It's our problem because they're accessing it through our county and then it's their problem because of environmental. And they let it go on. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next person to sign up to speak is Leslie Wagner. Welcome Leslie.
Good morning y'all. This is my first time attending one of these meetings as well, so thank you for hearing us out. I'm also part of the Bald Creek Road community. Mount Soma has most definitely become a problem. We've been out there for seven years. Everybody else has been out there much longer and has seen more than I have. However, in the seven years that we've been there, it has, the traffic has just increased dramatically to the point that it's really becoming a huge nuisance. Not only is, yes, the septic that Rodney just mentioned happening up there, I don't believe that there's any way that Mount Soma can possibly keep up with the capacity of people coming up there. They're parking almost a mile away down Bald Creek Road from the temple itself and parking on the sides of streets Jean mentioned. It's a hazard for people trying to get in and out of there. There also, my personal experience with it is my property abuts Bald Creek Road. I'm in Triple Creek Meadows. I have a beautiful view. I have big boulders on my property that are 60, roughly 50 to 60 yards away from Bald Creek Road. And these visitors are coming, parking along our property line, getting stuck in the ditch, leaving all kinds of property damage, trash, everything, coming up onto my property to hang out and play and picnic on my boulders. We have dogs. I'm fortunate that there hasn't been an incident with the dogs yet. When we've asked them to leave, like I said, we've actually had to go down and personally with our Polaris and the winch on the front of it, pull people out because they are so stuck where it stays wet along the bottom edge of the road. And it is creating a big problem for us having to then go back and fix the areas of the ditch that they've messed up. Our property is now damaged. There's just got to be something that the county can do. Our resources are being used up there. First responders are coming from Haywood County, not from Buncombe County. There's got to be some give and take. I mean, there's got to be something that we can do whether with Buncombe County or without. I have personally never heard the answer as to how this even happened anyway. How they gained access through Haywood County and not Buncombe and are using our roads and resources. I'd love for anybody to be able to, you know, give me some kind of, you know, explanation into that. I've just heard bits and pieces. So we're just here asking y'all for help. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, would anyone else care to address the board this morning? Okay, so you know, when I'll close the public comment session and I'll move to constituent concerns, but Brian, did you want to?
Mr. Chairman, right before the meeting started, I got the contact information from, I think, everybody that spoke and made a few notes. And I'm going to share those with Darren Bradish, Development Services Director. He would handle the environmental health issues. Of course, this is the second or third year we've heard about the traffic and the congestion along the road and we just don't have any jurisdiction, is my understanding. But we'll revisit that and see if there's any help we can give you. I'm sure it's awful when you have that number of vehicles, but it's sort of out of our hands. But we will follow up and see what we can do.
Is, if there's, so if folks are parking on the side of the road, could we, could you or Chris get with the DOT and see if there's signage we could put up? Maybe that, I mean, I know DOT has a right-of-way-through there for a public road, but I think it would be good since this is, since they're abusing the right-of-way by parking there when they probably shouldn't be. I mean, if you park on the side of the road, it's because you've got a flat tire or your car's running out of, you know, it's not working properly. So, but as far as just pulling over on the side of the road, I think if we could put, if the DOT could put like no parking or if they have some kind of protocol for stuff like that, because I'm sure that this issue is an issue in other areas where they have, you know, high volumes of people pulling over the side of the road. So if we could contact the DOT and see if there was a, some signage that they could put up and then maybe that would alert visitors that they need not be parking on the side of the road just to be sightseeing or whatever. But I really, we really don't go back and forth. But have you tried that? I'll let you see.
We've got signs up in both languages. It does no good.
Okay, from the DOT?
I'm talking about two tenths half mile off the state road. It doesn't mean that they come right down there and park.
Okay, yeah, I would, personally, if it was me, I would put no trespassing signs up. And I guess you've done that. Maybe, maybe we need to find out what language, what language they speak and put that up. Maybe they'll understand that.
We've got it in both languages.
Okay.
According to their experience.
Okay, all right.
We can sit here and talk about it, but seeing it in person is a whole different world. When you go, I went out there at 3:00 in the evening and last year and cut up Bald Creek, I passed 142 cars going in and they were that many coming out. And this was at 3:00 in the evening. By the time I got to the top of the mountain up there, I was blocked in, probably hour and a half before I could even get out. We walked down to where the temple thing is. It's not nothing like it looks like it is. People don't realize how bad it really is. That's the reason last year when I brought it up, it's, I can't sit here and tell you what it's like for these people really, because it's, it blew my mind. I thought it was being exaggerated a whole lot. And I went and met with some people at the truck stop and I thought, after the meeting, I thought, well, I'll ride up there and just see for myself. And it's, you wouldn't believe, if you saw it in person, you wouldn't believe. It's, I mean, it's unreal. I got up there and couldn't get turned around, was blocked in, had to sit there. And if there'd been any kind of emergency or anything that happened, there was a bus that went up the hill one time up there. I was being told about it and showed a video. There was a bus that got on that hill and burnt the clutch out of it on that hill. That's how steep it is trying to go in there with that bus. And well, the whole place was blocked up until they could get out of there. I mean, we're talking about hours, not, that road is not nowhere near, as it goes by those developments up there, it's not nowhere near, even anywhere near up to standard for that kind of traffic. It's, I can understand where they're coming from and I just hope we can come up with some kind of solution. In my mind, I can't understand how, the only access they've got to it is from Haywood County, but Buncombe County's getting all the benefits from it other than this fire department taxes. And these people are suffering because of Buncombe County. And I mean, I understand we've got several places that are like that in Haywood County that you can only access some places in Buncombe County from Haywood and vice versa. But it's, these people have to live there. I mean, it has to be miserable. I mean, and I see exactly where they're coming from and I just hope we can come up with something because, I mean, it's not only a health issue, it's a safety issue, a major safety issue. They've had, what, a couple of heart attacks over there and couldn't get EMS to them and stuff over there.
EMS was just up there, not this past weekend, but the weekend before.
Last year, somebody died up there or something and they couldn't get in there to get them out of there and stuff. And it's, it's just sitting here talking about it, I just wish that everybody could go look at it because it's not nothing like we're sitting here thinking. The public's sitting here thinking about that. It's not nothing like it once you get up there. It's a whole different world.
Do you know if that organization has some sort of calendar of events that would indicate which weekends?
Yes. I believe on their website, you can find the calendar of events.
So could we use, I know with it being on the roads, that's going to be the patrol, not the sheriff's office, but could we have some sort of sheriff's office presence on those heavier weekends? No pressure on the team back there, but, I mean, just to keep them, just to keep them out of the, you know, cornfield.
Bill, come up, come up to the mic, yeah. I don't dare tell you to sit down.
And I don't mean to put you on the spot.
That's fine. So it's something that our staff has been dealing with over the last couple of years because it's not intended to handle that amount of traffic. What frustrates me is, you know, you have people from out of our community that bring values from wherever they're from. And this is where you see the trash on the side of the road. We don't live like that here. And so I completely understand where you're coming from. Unfortunately, the resources that we have to put to that, by the time you call a deputy, we get up there, the situation's resolved. I was just talking with the chief. We're going to get the staff together and look at ways that we can get a more, get a better presence up there. And I don't want to talk about that now, but we're back there talking about some ideas and perhaps even engaging Buncombe County in some partnerships. All that, we were just, literally just back there talking, talking about. So I can tell you, if you call, we're coming. I would prefer that when you call, when you see something like that, give us the opportunity to take a report because all of this goes into our computer-rated dispatch system. It gives us data and information to present to Buncombe County or any other partners in getting this resolved. And, you know, it may seem silly to call and make a report about somebody throwing a diaper in a ditch, but that's the documentation necessary we need for us to act environmentally as well as from a law enforcement perspective. And y'all know it's tough for us. I've got six deputies on duty on patrol 24/7 when we're fully staffed. Getting someone up there, you know, that may be coming from Crusoe or, you know, even Clyde, it takes a while. So, and I-
You would take a full time.
I'm work-
Yeah. The reason I ask about their, the reason I ask about their schedule of events is that would be maybe indicative of when traffic would be at its peak. And because I've also taken the ride up through there and there are times that it's not busy, but there are times that it is, it is. And so if we were kind of aware, I'm not trying to put it off on you, just trying to find some sort of-
I don't want to tell you what we're talking about back there.
Yeah, some sort of resolution, some sort of resolve for the folks that live there. And it is a safety issue, like Commissioner Ramey said. So, and it's been ongoing. It's not an easy fix for sure.
No. And I just don't want to, I don't want to speak out of turn to anybody's hopes up, but it's, I hear you. And I want you to know that I hear you. And I know if I lived up there, I wouldn't want it either. So if it's your problem, it's my problem and we're going to take a look at fixing it as quickly and as best as we can. In the meantime, you know, make sure that you're giving us a call and giving us the opportunity to put that data out there. I am familiar with the additional presence when they have times of higher activity. And we're going to look at some things. What I would also like to do following this is get away where we can get the entire neighborhood together. In years past, the chief has sat down with other residents. I don't think any of you, any of the residents of you here were part of that meeting. And I think, you know, your power comes from, as a collective community. I don't want to get everybody together that we can. We can have a public meeting and start engaging those folks and let them know what's coming if they don't stop this and start forcing that change. But when you speak with one voice as a group of people, I mean, this is good, this is great, but get us there. Let's get all the community partners involved. Let's get environmental involved. And I'll be happy to talk with the county manager about what that looks like from our perspective. And we're happy to lead that effort and do whatever's necessary to resolve this problem because you live there at your home. Let's, let's, let's take a look at that. And I'll give it my best. So, and I know my staff will as well. So, and I'll be happy to report back, ma'am, sir, on what that effort looks like. I think it's a little late this year to be looking at that, but we certainly have plenty of time to start looking at what that looks like for next year. So.
I think the calendar events, you know, look at that would be good to know when their heavy traffic is going to be probably. I mean, I could see, if I was going up somewhere and there was a sheriff's car sitting in a few places, of course, that takes resources, but still that would definitely-
We're going to look at that without an additional burden to taxpayers. That's all. You know, we have programs where people, people can pay to have a deputy. I'm certainly, I'm going to be careful because I'm not suggesting anybody in the community do that. However, that might be an idea, sir. And so, but again, I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn. We have ways in which we can do that, but it's way too early to even talk about that's possible at this point because-
But you can work with the county manager on some of that.
Yes, I'm happy to do that.
You know, not only that, but I was just sitting here thinking, I mean, I totally understand where you guys are coming from. If that was me, I wouldn't want that coming by my house as well. But I don't know if, as of a board collectively, we could be a voice for these people if it's talking with the DOT or if it's talking with Buncombe County. I mean, I'd like to do what we can do as a board here. I know that we're limited on what we can do, but we can be a voice for you. So if we could be a voice to the DOT, you know, after we collect some reports, whatever that is, I'm willing to do what we can do. So.
Okay, thank you.
I would, Bill, before you leave, I would just like to inject that, just to back up what everyone else here has said. I talked to Brandon several times about this over the last couple of years. And everything's been said here is good. I know Ms. Sutton was the first speaker and she suggested we try to work with our neighbors in Buncombe County and try to come to some kind of resolution to help resolve some of these issues. Great idea. It's what we should do. And so if the county manager would get with Buncombe County's manager again, I know I contacted you last year about this and contact them and try to work together. But I will go ahead and talk out of school, but I'm not talking out of school. I was a member of the Bethel Youth Organization, as was Brandon, and we had to pay for security out of our pocket when we had events. And so if you could get with Buncombe County and try to work out some kind of a situation here where they actually need extra security. These people are being trespassed on. Their property rights are being infringed on. They're trying to be good neighbors. And I'm afraid if this escalates any further without any intervention from our law enforcement, there's going to be a call come out that's not going to be a good call. And so if we can get ahead of this right now and work with Buncombe County and maybe fund and do charge it to Mount Soma, they're the ones that are causing this. So I'm throwing that out there as a Commissioner that are hearing some of the residents' concerns here and offering a solution. If y'all could work together and maybe see what kind of feedback you can get toward that. Because I do know that organizations that have big events will hire an off-duty sheriff's deputy, pay them some overtime, be good money for them, and it creates a safer situation for everybody. So if-
So you're summarizing the discussion that we just had back there?
There is a precedent.
But again, it's a money issue.
There's a precedent already set about private events.
Oh, we don't have an issue with that. Again, it's a resourcing issue.
Well, if you could talk to Sheriff Miller in Buncombe County and the county manager and at least get these folks some relief from being infringed on their personal property rights. And the DOT is going to do their thing. We don't do roads. The Department of Transportation come up with a solution. You may or may not be in favor of it, but if it, if it, if it gets to the point to where they- in favor of it, but if it, if it, if it, if it gets to the point to where they act, uh, you know, they're, they're going to, maybe, you know, no telling what they'll do, but uh, the traffic issue is, is, is again, that's the Department of Transportation's issue. And again, if Brian could notify them and, and collaborate with them on some solutions, uh, I think these folks would appreciate it.
I, I would by no means was suggesting that we use our resources for the folks at Mount Somma. I was suggesting that we use our resources to make things better for our people.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
I clearly got that.
Okay.
My only point was I want to use-
Yes.
Someone else's resources besides the taxpayer to address this problem.
Yeah, we don't want to provide-
I don't want to rush out there.
We don't want to provide security or traffic control for them, we want to take care of the folks that are in our community.
Yes, ma'am.
Some of our guys might appreciate some overtime too, so we don't want to cut them out on that.
Well, uh, they tend not to turn it down when it comes up, so.
Well, come up to the microphone, I'll let you, I'll let you do that. We don't do this back and forth, but I'll, since y'all, since y'all come up here as a group, I'll let you-
My name's Danny McRoy. It's kind of getting into the financial part of it too. Uh, like Rodney, Brad and myself, we probably got six to $10,000 in our corn crops. I, you get three cars a day pulling off on the side of the road, going down in there and pulling your corn and knocking your corn stalks down, and us and eating it for cow feed. I mean, they're, they're getting in their pockets pretty bad, you know? So, it's just, you know, it's kind of stealing. They're coming in there stealing. I ran them out of Adrian Preston's corn, wife's son, he going to his little granddaughter's birthday party, I had to stop and run them out of his corn. They were four down in there, pulling corn, just dumping it in the trucks of their cars, you know? And I asked him, I said, "You want to pay us for this stuff?" "No, no, no, we don't pay for it." And I said, "We'll start growing it yourself. Find you somewhere and grow you some corn and quit pulling ours. You know, we got $10,000 in this, in this field of corn, you know, go somewhere else." So.
Okay, thanks, Danny.
Well, again, to reiterate what I was saying, uh, these folks have some personal property rights that's being infringed upon and before something turns, turns worse, if we could get ahead of this, I think it would help everybody.
We're on it.
Yeah, to me, if, if they're putting crops in their cars, that's stealing and I guess-
It is, yes, sir, without question.
You can do a report on that and get, write their tags down and we can go get them.
Every time.
Well, not only that, but if they've got no trespassing signs and they've got signage saying they can't pull off and they're still doing it, then that's where law enforcement comes in. If we start prosecuting them for it, then they're going, the word will get out and hopefully they would stop that.
That's true.
But if they've got the signage, then we need to take it to the next step.
Well, the issue is Mount Somma and we need to engage them in this conversation officially at some point. And if it's not corrected, then they need to provide the resources to correct it-
That's right.
Because they are the originator of the issue. And, and just as sheriff, I'll be totally opposed to these folks paying for, putting any more additional effort other than calling us every time it happens so that I have the data and the resources necessary to go and address the problem, so.
So is Mount Somma, are they governed by like a board of directors or do you know?
That's a great question. I, I don't, I, I can't speak to that, I haven't studied on it recently. It's, uh, if I remember correctly, it is a faith-based, a, a non-traditional, faith-based organization. Now, there, there's some information online about it. Um, I don't want to speak out of turn because I, I haven't looked at it in a year, um...
Bill, this guy that's over that, over, I can't remember his name, y'all know him?
What is it?
He just, he just rubs it in their face. I mean, he, he threat, always threatened if anybody does anything, he going to sue them and stuff like that.
I'd be glad to have a talk with him.
He's arrogant as could be. I mean, he's really, really arrogant type guy.
Well, I'll, I'll talk to him, let's, let's, we'll, we'll start there. And we need to involve Buncombe County and, you know, we'll, we'll go, we'll go that route, so.
Thanks for coming up.
Yes, ma'am, anytime. Gentlemen, sir, good.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Okay. We'll see what we can do. We got that, uh, private property rights and all that, private roads and everything like that, but still, if they're stealing, they're stealing, that can't happen, with everything, so. Uh, okay. Does anybody else have any other constituent concerns? Anybody? Okay.
Uh, I did and I, I sent it to the county manager and I think that, that we are addressing it through environmental services, so thanks for taking care of that.
Okay. Okay, next order of business, administrative agency reports and presentations, and we have an update regarding Vaya Health Go Live for tailored health insurance plans and Vaya Health Community Relations Regional Director Shelley Foreman's here to speak to that.
Oh.
Welcome, Shelley.
I was wondering who was, how do I, oh, you didn't want to ask, so that one goes forward? Okay, yeah, this one's for her. Okay. I'm not sure if I need my reading glasses or not. Well, hello, um, my name is Shelley Foreman. I'm the Community Relations Regional Director for Vaya Health, working in the seven westernmost counties. Um, and I would say that I typically start my introduction by saying Vaya Health is a public agency that manages state and Medicaid funds for people with mental health, substance use and developmental disability disorders. I will say that after a culmination of years planning at the state level as of July 1st, uh, Vaya Health also managed physical healthcare for our plan members as well as pharmacy needs. So, we have really come full circle and become a health plan, still a public health plan, um, that has expanded our scope. We will still be providing, um, all of the services we've done in the past, we'll still be managing, um, uh, funds for people with no insurance for behavioral health and intellectual and developmental disabilities. Um, and we've moved towards a process of what we call whole person or integrated care. So, in the state of North Carolina, uh, there are now, uh, four statewide standard plans that manage physical health and mild to moderate behavioral health. Um, and Vaya, which now continues to offer all of the same services and contracted providers in the past, as well as traumatic brain injuries, which is, uh, something that new, new is happening. Um, but we also now manage, um, as I said, all primary care, physical care, um, things like chemotherapy, dialysis, all your medication needs. I did put a map in, um, there have been a lot of changes and evolution over the last several years, but these are the four LME, MCOs that remain in the state of North Carolina and they, as of July 1st, began doing the same functions. Um, well, how do people know they're in the Vaya Health Plan? Um, well, this spring, uh, Vaya Health was busy, um, all of our plan members, people that we've already been serving, um, have gotten new Medicaid cards, just like you have your insurance card, they have an insurance card, um, with Vaya Health. It has their primary care physician listed on that, um, as well as a variety of lines they can call for information, which I'll tell you about in a moment. So, again, what's new? Well, basically, for the last several years or more, Vaya has been preparing for this launch, um, by working tirelessly to develop relationships and contracts, um, with physical health providers, hospital systems, FQHCs like Blue Ridge or Appalachian Mountain Community Health, um, and health departments to be able for us to effectively manage those services. Um, so we have now vastly expanded our network of providers to include those folks. Um, because I know that, uh, people in the community watch this, I do want to say, um, that if someone is seeing a primary care doctor, especially I would say primary care, but specialty care as well, um, that they can continue to see those doctors and services with no disruption in their health plan if they're, if we haven't yet contracted with them. And then we will reach out to that provider to try to develop, um, both, either a, a contract, um, for long-term care or single case kinds of contracts. So, no one's care is going to be disrupted. That's been one of the primary drivers of both Vaya and the state. Um, so it has been, um, a large evolution in our provider network. Um, so really, what's staying the same, again, um, we still will cover all of the services we've, um, covered in the past. These are some just examples, um, child and adolescent services, intellectual and developmental disability services, um, really more what we call enhanced services, those are people, uh, services for people who have more significant mental health and substance use needs. So none of that changes. So, what's new for our plan members? As I mentioned, folks have their Medicaid card with Vaya Health. Um, one of the things we continue to have is our 24/7, 365, um, crisis line. So if someone is experiencing a crisis, a behavioral health crisis, they can still call that line. We continue to have our member and recipient service line and that's the line where people can call to get questions answered, to get access to care, to get referred to the appropriate place. Um, we now have a pharmacy line and a nurse line. Um, and those are, uh, an expansion to allow people to call in if they have a physical healthcare need or a question about their medications. The other thing that's different, and I'm sure, um, Ira Dove is happy, um, that Vaya Health is now responsible for scheduling non-emergency Medicaid transportation, um, for folks who are in the Vaya Health Plan, which we are calling Vaya Total Care. So now we contract, um, and, and the standard plans also contact, contract with, uh, organization called Motive Care. So, the member can call that line if they need transportation, the provider, physical or behavioral health provider can call to schedule, especially if they're routine, um, kinds of things. Um, or, um, our tailored care managers can assist in making those connections. So it's really a no, no wrong door. Um, and all of this information is on our website and the member handbook. Um, so one of the things we thought was really cool that we did, um, in Going Live is really trying to provide, uh, some incentives for that whole person care, um, knowing that people can't be at their best physical or health and wellness, um, if they have other needs that they may have that go beyond just going to their doctor, to the behavioral health clinician. So we developed a package called Vaya Total Care Perks for members. Um, these include, and I'm not going to read all the perks because you have the, um, the PowerPoint, but wellness perks. So these are things like home-delivered meals for people who are being discharged from the hospital, uh, vouchers for Weight Watchers, um, mobile app subscriptions for Weight Watchers and gift cards for, uh, vaccines. We also do pregnancy perks, um, and my favorite is the GED perks. I think that's a great incentive, education vouchers, um, for people to do their GED work, to get tutoring, practice tests and to do, um, the actual test online. So we think that's really cool. Um, safety perks, those are basically home safety and assistance programs. And we also, or, um, offer some non-medical transportation perks, um, which we do contract through Motive Care, where people can go to the park, to the grocery store, to markets, libraries, things that aren't related to medical care. And then lastly, again, we're still, um, we are now responsible for scheduling non-emergency transportation for plan members. Vaya still has, um, tailored care managers as well as, as part of this, um, other providers in our community, like Blue Ridge Health and Appalachian Community Services provide care management, so a member can choose. Um, and those are folks that work with our Vaya plan members to arrange medical appointments, provide support, um, help with all kinds of issues related to their social, um, and emotional success. So we're really proud of all the work our care managers do in working with our plan members to help them get what they need to help them be successful in their healthcare. The last thing I wanted to mention, and this has been really exciting, when the state of North Carolina decided to, um, bring Medicaid under managed care, um, they applied for a waiver to do a pilot program called the Healthy Opportunities Pilot. Dogwood Trust was applicant agency, um, to, and they won the award, um, for managing this pilot in the counties served by Dogwood Health Trust, which obviously covers, covers Haywood, um, and our far western counties. Impact Health is the name of the organization that Dogwood created to do this and, um, there are several eligibility requirements, um, but our plan members are now, um, eligible for the Healthy Opportunities Pilot. And this gives even more supports, um, housing and tenancy supports for people in need, um, food supports and healthy nutrition, more transportation support because we know that's a huge issue. And they also do work with folks who are victims of toxic stress and interpersonal violence by helping them with getting, um, the supports and, and legal supports that they need. So, that's a lot that's new. Um, it's going well, fingers crossed. I, I always say, we know there are going to be bumps in the road. Um, right now, I will say, um, just in, um, our last regional board meeting, transportation, the non-emergency transportation, um, is probably one of our most challenges, but we're working very hard with our vendor. Um, you know, we had a lot of focus groups in the beginning with staff members and of course, having driven around western North Carolina, it's like, God, not always going to see a road sign. You know, you're, when they say they live up a driveway, it may be, you know, two miles up a gravel road and you don't want to take your Ford Focus up there. So they've done a lot, and you want your cars well marked. We're not used to Ubers and stuff, so, you know, don't want to drive up into somebody's driveway without your car being marked. Um, so those problems, we're on it, we're working on it. Everything else seems to go, be going smoothly with how access to healthcare. Obviously, we'll be working on this for a very long time. Um, and I also wanted to just, um, stop by thanking, uh, Commissioner Ramey for being on our regional board. I know you all appointed him, as well as Ira Dove, who is the chair of our regional board and a member of the Vaya Health Board, our, our larger board. Um, so Haywood County is well represented and, and they are both gentlemen who will make their voices heard.
Okay, very good.
Shelley, uh, one, one question, you, you talked about the, uh, transport. Will that affect our county's convalescent transport load on our EMS?
To the, um, EMS is, um, emergency transport typically, yes. We do, um, we still do, I mean, emergency transportation is something that's just a little different. The non-emergency used to be scheduled to do DSS and it's for like, I need to go to my doctor, I need to go to dialysis, I need to-
Somebody needs to take a ride home from the emergency room or from the hospital home, we-
Yeah, they pick you up and take you.
Yeah.
And then we, obviously, emergency like ambulances, EMS, that's still, people still get those services. And then county transportation, so.
Yeah. I was just thinking, thinking out loud that maybe that could reduce the burden on our-
Uh-huh.
-county EMS units-
Right.
Since you're transporting through a third party.
I, I believe so. I'll follow up, but I mean, I, we do-
There might be some overlap.
I think EMS can now, there was a rule and, um, I'm really speaking like I should be careful what I say, I'm, you know, I'm not sure. But I think, um, EMS now has the ability to bill Medicaid. And so they bill Medicaid and we're one of those Medicaid members.
On the primary care physician, uh, I noticed that these folks, they have an option if, if they're not happy with the one they're assigned. If they, if they happen to have one assigned to them, that they can-
Yeah, right. So when, um, so in the spring, information went out, people would enroll. Like, they would get a letter saying, "Welcome, you're in Vaya Total Care," um, and they asked them to choose their primary care provider as well as their, um, tailored care manager, whether they were going to have a care manager through Vaya or one of our, um, community-based providers. Um, what would happen is if somebody just said, "Oh, I don't need to do this" and put the letter aside, the state had an algorithm where they'd actually go into their paid claims and see, okay, this is the primary care provider, um, that they've been using and it, it would auto-enroll them. Um, the other thing folks have is a window of time where they can change it, like I switched my primary care doctor and I can change it. And what we're doing now is if someone didn't make a selection or the selection, the person that they see was not in, contracted at the time, because, you know, we were doing contracts at the last minute, we can go in and we will reach out to that primary care, especially primary care, but all the docs, you know, and say, "Hey, you have this plan member, would you like to do a contract with-" and say, hey, you have this plan member, would you like to do a contract with us? The good thing about, you know, with Medicaid is we, you get the Medicaid rate. It's not like a private insurance company necessarily negotiating for a lower rate. So, and most of our providers in this region, primary care, take Medicaid. And then we have this window of opportunity for the follower. We don't even question, people just go through, and we're trying to reach out. So we're trying to make sure people don't have to make changes. The interesting thing is just like managing things like, you know, transplants and dialysis and chemotherapy. It's a pretty big lift, and we've had a lot of great medical staff we've brought on board, and pharmacists and nurses and docs to be able to help manage them.
How many people do you have enrolled in the Total Plan?
Pardon?
Sorry. How many people do you have enrolled in Via's Total Plan? Do you know a number?
I'm going to have to follow up on that. I'm sorry, it's Tuesday after a long weekend. We have a large number of plan members. So what happened, though, is when the state, when the state went live with managed care for all services, we have a smaller number of plan members than we did in the past, because some of the standard plans can do like outpatient, basic benefit outpatient services and some behavioral health. But I'll get that information back to you. I used to carry around a handy dandy chart. But, and then with expansion, you know, that number is growing too. I will say, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has a dashboard on their website where you can look at expansion and how many people are being added by county, by region. You can look at what health plan they're going to, so that's really cool. But I'll follow up and send Bryant an email.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. And these, the last question, these numbers that you spoke of for the mental health crisis line, and then the nurse, and I guess pharmaceutical or medical lines, those phone numbers are used only by the folks enrolled in this particular plan, correct?
Those, these numbers, well, the crisis line, anyone can call. If you're a member of another plan, we'll still get you connected with crisis services. All the other numbers are for folks that we work with in Via Total Care. And even, there's a carve-out population called Medicaid Direct. But all of those lines are on our website, they're in all our printed materials, and they're available to anyone to call. The pharmacy line and the nurse line is probably more for the folks that are in Via Total Care, but folks who are state-funded and not a part of Medicaid or just the Medicaid Direct still have access to call all that information. And the information line gets you to whoever you need to go to find out what you need.
Does connect the person, does connect the individual to care? Is that, that's what that line does, okay. That's good to know.
And it's on their card, too. So like, if I, you can pull out your insurance card if you're a member, and you have all that listed there.
Okay, thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Shelley, I was wondering, is, so this is just for Medicaid patients, right? So if you qualify as a Medicaid patient?
It's a Medicaid plan. Right, it's for people who, the way you get into the tailored plan, you had Medicaid, but you are a person, we probably previously served, who had a moderate to severe mental health substance use or developmental disability. And so when the state decided to put all of Medicaid under managed care, like both for physical health, and then what we did, some people went into those standard plans, and they have Medicaid, and they can get their physical health, their pharmacy health, and like basic benefit, mental health services, and some level of care. So what changed for us is we're still managing all those behavioral health and IDD services, but as of July 1st, for those people who we were serving in our health plan, we now have, are responsible for their physical and pharmacy needs, and we accomplish that through those contracts. So, and we do still provide services for mental health substance use and developmental disabilities for people with no insurance. But they're not really considered part of the Medicaid health plan. More to come, we'll keep you posted.
This stuff's all complicated to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
I don't see how people keep up with all this. I didn't know, I thought Medicaid was Medicaid. I didn't know you could have different plans, so that's pretty neat, I guess, so. Okay, so next is discussion adjustment to the agenda. Does anybody have anything this morning? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on the four items on the consent agenda?
I just, I just would like to comment on the consent agenda. It's a wonderful, positive consent agenda. I see Kathy sitting back there from the library. One item on the consent agenda is that some folks decided to leave assets in their estate and gave it to the library. And that's a wonderful thing. And whoever that was, if your family's out there listening, you're to be commended. Thank you for doing that. And also, this sign situation, I see some of our EMS folks back here. We've become the lead entity, I guess, on being able to purchase some signs for some sister counties, Clay, Macon, and Graham, and we're just passing that through. So that's a good, a good thing we did there to help our sister counties out. And also, the budget amendment to the Master Gardener Program, the extension service, and also some of that funding goes to our 4-H program for our kids. And that's really a good, good thing. So just wanted to comment on those items on our consent agenda. Mr. Chair.
Okay, great.
And I would make a motion, if no one else wants to comment, that we go ahead and pass the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, any other discussion? Okay, here and then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda. The first is a request approval of a resolution honoring Captain Robert Kevin Brooks for 10 years of law enforcement service and awarding his issued badge and sidearm. And our Sheriff Bill Wilkie is here to read that. Welcome again.
Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to be able to honor one of our own. He retired after 10 years, and it's important to know that he is still on our reserve roles and still assists and works with the sheriff's office from time to time. So with that said, whereas Captain Brooks joined the Haywood County Sheriff's Office as a deputy sheriff on May 19th, 2014, held the rank of deputy sheriff, corporal, and captain, all while serving within the uniformed division of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office, and whereas Captain Brooks's service and dedication to the Haywood County Sheriff's Office, the citizens of Haywood County, and his many accomplishments in the field of law enforcement during 10 years of service to our community and a total of 20 total years within the profession are hereby recognized and commended. And whereas North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2 provides that retiring deputies of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office may receive, at the sheriff's discretion, the issued sidearm of such retiring deputy at a price determined by the Board of Commissioners. And whereas Captain Brooks has served as a member of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office and is retired from the Haywood County Sheriff's Office effective 1 June 2024, now therefore, be it resolved by the Haywood County Board of Commissioners as follows. Sheriff Wilkie is hereby authorized, in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2, to allow the transfer to Captain Robert Kevin Brooks, the badge worn by him during his service with the Haywood County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Wilkie is hereby authorized, in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina General Statutes 20-187.2, to allow the transfer to Captain Brooks' issued service sidearm, Glock 9mm Model 45. Be it further resolved, the Haywood County Board of Commissioners recognizes and thanks Captain Robert Kevin Brooks for his dedicated service to Haywood County and its citizens. Adopted this on the 3rd day of September 2024. Captain Brooks couldn't join us today, but he does send his regards and thanks.
Now, just knowing Captain Brooks, I pretty much grew up with Captain Brooks, and I've known him a long time. He lived just above me, and I could probably tell some stories on him, but I'm not going to do that this morning. Me and him, what I will say is, I never thought I'd see the day that he'd be a captain of the Sheriff's Department, and I'd be sitting where I'm sitting. So I guess with that, I'll make the motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 1.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, next order, or the next item is, number 2, is to request approval to adopt a sole-source resolution to contract with Trane for the attached proposal to replace VRF Unit Number 5 and attached branch box in the historic courthouse, and the approval for the county manager to sign all related contract documents. And we have our facilities director, Tim Sisk, to speak to that this morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Hope everybody's well. Yeah, we bring this to y'all this morning. It's a sole-source resolution request. Trane has purchased all Mitsubishi equipment and corporations, so that's the only company we can work with on this. And I'll go through the resolution now.
Okay.
Whereas North Carolina General Statute 143-129 details the procedures for letting of public contracts, and whereas North Carolina General Statute 143-129-EG identifies exceptions to those procedures as they relate to procurement contracts, and whereas Item 6 of North Carolina General Statute 143-129-E provides that formal bid procedures shall not apply to purchases of apparatus, supplies, materials, or equipment when one performance or price competition for the product or not available. Number 2, needed product is available from only one source of supplier. Or number 3, standardization of compatibility is the overriding consideration. And whereas the Haywood County Facilities and Maintenance Department has a need to purchase a VRF replacement system from Trane for the Haywood County Historic Courthouse, Trane is the only manufacturer, distributor, authorized dealer or supplier of this product or its equivalent. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Haywood County Board of Commissioners in general session of, on September 3rd, 2024, hereby authorize Haywood County to purchase a VRF replacement system as permitted under North Carolina General Statute 143-129-E6 for equipment standardization, adopted this 3rd day of September 2024. Any questions?
Anybody got anything? Trane's a good company, I know that.
Yep, Trane's trading this way.
They make great product. Okay, can I entertain a motion, we approve Item 2 of the regular agenda? If there's no questions?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, number, the last item on the regular agenda, number 3, is to request approval of budget amendment, Health and Human Services Agency, $306,983 to recognize revenue carryover for funds received in fiscal year '24 and unspent. Revenues are projected in January, and adjustments are needed to reconcile the accounts to the actual funds received. And our finance director, Christian Owens, is here this morning.
Good morning. This is one of the annual budget amendments that we do to roll over these funds each year. There are funds that were received in fiscal year 2014. Ah, goodness, 2024, and not spent at the end of the fiscal year. It's primarily for child support, adoption, and foster care.
Okay. This is just rollover, so, anybody got any questions or anything? Okay, can I have a motion, we approve Item 3? Okay, is there a second?
Say.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our agenda. I did have one thing under constituent concerns, and Zach's here this morning. Zach, do you mind, there's a, y'all have put up, they have, or the, we have put up the river gauges, yeah? And I was, so I was talking to somebody today, and they said, they put a, they put something up on the bridge, and it's a camera, and we don't know. Yes, and I said, I'm pretty sure that those are river gauges. So if you would, tell us where the, if you can remember where some of those are. And I'm just calling you out of the blue.
Yes, sir, good morning. We're thankful we're entering the phase of our project for a rain and river gauge project to where we're doing the installation right now of those river gauges. These gauges are getting installed along the East Fork of the Pigeon River, and then also in the Crusoe area. We've got one up on Dutch Cove that's going in. And what looks like a camera is actually a laser beam that's shooting down at the river, recording the height of the river, and then transmitting it out via the antennas that's on top of it. So it's all going to a VHF repeater site on Mount Pisgah, and then transmitting data to Raleigh to display on the NC Flood Inhibition Mapping Alert Network program.
So, can you name where all those are? And I'll tell you the reason I ask was, so the one that they were asking me about was on the bridge at, kind of near Iron Duff Road off Highway 209? Would that be one?
We're not putting one in there, actually, on Iron Duff Road at 209. Where were we putting those at? Or, we've got along Little East Fork, they're right there, just below the Boy Scout camp on the bridge near the Wildlife property.
I saw that one yesterday, so.
And then along Lake, or excuse me, Crusoe Road, there's one going in at the tunnel, it's not been installed yet, that's right there at the Shining Rock Trailhead. Then the next one down is at Chickapin, right across from Crusoe Fire Department. And then the next one down from that is at Burnett Cove. And then, like I said, there's one on Dutch Cove that's going in also, and then one on Wells Road. And they're all getting attached to NC DOT structures, bridges, they're going over top of it.
You got one on Hungry Creek?
There's not one on Hungry Creek that we're putting in.
Okay, just Chickapin.
Yeah, just Chickapin on the main river channel.
What about Wells Road? I've seen one on Wells, I think.
Yes, sir, on Wells Road, we got that one going in.
So, okay. Okay, so I'm wondering, like on Little East Fork, for instance, there's not any, how does the signal get out there? Because there's no, okay.
Yeah, so the vendor's actually working on some radio propagation right now on how to make it transmit. I believe on that site there in particular, he was able actually to get the VHF signal out to the repeater where he needed to. If not, he was tying it in. You'll notice on some of them, they've just got some kind of antennas that look like maybe octopus arms. And then some also have that wire antenna that's like an octopus, but then a long antenna with forks off the side of it. That's hitting another site up the river and transmitting the data from it to that site, and then that site's pushing it to the antenna tower on top of Mount Pisgah.
Okay. Interesting, okay.
Zach, did we take over maintenance of the one on the former Pact of Evergreen site on the Lake Logan Dam? I know they were, I've actually worked on it, but they were maintaining that and helping pay for that. Did we take that over, NCGS, or?
That's still under USGS, under the resolution that we passed, the couple of commissioner meetings back. They're still going to do the maintenance on those. We're going to be replacing those with county-owned gauge sites within the next year. We haven't started that phase of the project yet. This was part of the Tropical Storm Fred, Amit Needs Funds that we were replacing, or putting in new sites for the river stretches that were in monitor.
USGS is currently?
They're currently maintaining, yes, sir.
Well, I appreciate you coming up on, just on the spur of the moment. And I always chastise these guys for getting out of order. I should have brought this up during constituent concerns, but we were kind of focused on all this other, and I forgot all about it. But I appreciate you coming up and just kind of describing that, because I think it's going to be important as we go forward that those, that equipment's there to, you know, put out the word. Especially this time of year.
Yes, sir. Right now, they're currently not completely online and reporting to the Feyman site. They're still in the fine-tuning modules of, you know, what the river height actually is compared to what the laser data is reading out of it. And we've got a meeting here at the end of the month with the National Weather Service. They're coming up to do some site visits and ride around the county and talk about the high-water event we had back in January of this past year, and discuss where our management action points will be at when the river reaches a certain height for these new sites, so we can coordinate warning and notification and what the action decision should be when the river reaches a certain height. So just want to make that clear, they're not visible right yet on the NC Feyman website.
Right, yeah, you're just kind of working through all that.
Yep.
Okay, okay, great. Well, it's like Brandon said, it's that time of year, so. I think I read, where I think from August 10th to October 10th was prime hurricane season, so.
We are, and we're moving into September right now, which is National, you know, Winter Weather or Weather Preparedness Month in general, just for weather hazards. So you'll see some information starting to come up out of our shop about the different hazards that we expect in our area for winter storms, hurricanes, flash flooding, wildfire, any type of, you know, preparedness information that the citizen may need, you know, that they can do to take care of themselves or family with these natural hazards that we live with in our environment.
Yeah. Well, you know, we live in the mountains, you don't think we worry. Well, you know, we live in the mountains, you don't think we worry about hurricanes, but we do.
We do.
Because we get hammered when they're away.
And there's about three different sites out there in the Atlantic right now that are areas of interest as the National Hurricane Center, you know, classifies them, I saw on the report this morning, nothing's formed yet, but we always keep an eye on the tropics during this time of the year.
Yeah, well, I think it's less than they thought, which is good, because, I mean, to me, because I think they said the next storm was going to be G, so that seems to be low on the alphabet, so at least we're not up at Z right now or something.
Hopefully, it stays that way.
Yeah, that's exactly right, so, but I'm hoping it'll be, I hope everybody's wrong, I hope the predictors are wrong about that for a change, so.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you for coming up, Zach.
Thank y'all, have a good one.
Okay, does anybody else have anything they want to add this morning? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. I appreciate you making it out, Terry. I know you've been a little bit under the weather, so appreciate you getting here, so. Okay, all right, so I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, everybody be safe. Thank you.